I will call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Education, which is duly noticed on December 6th, my sister's birthday, through posting a notification of the press in accordance with Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight four. First up, Mr. Millard.
Weren't you in a band?
Yeah, but I didn't use this kind of thing.
He's a drummer.
I'm a drummer. Oh, come on. Here we go with the drummer jokes. No, he wasn't in a band.
We're all ready for a holiday break. I don't know about the rest.
Thank you. Thank you there, President Huth. It's my pleasure to introduce to you Principal of Kennedy Elementary School, Mrs. Jennifer Fanning. Mrs. Fanning. Oh, there you go, okay. Oh, there's more, so you'll really love this. Mrs. Fanning began her career in education right here in the school district of Janesville, and this year, Mrs. Fanning is celebrating her twenty-fifth year in education. During those twenty-five years, Mrs. Fanning served as an elementary school teacher, a gifted and talented teacher, and for the past three years, she has been the principal at Kennedy Elementary. Mrs. Fanning also served as an elementary school principal and intermediate school principal for the Beloit School District. Mrs. Fanning says her goal is to inspire students. She herself is a lifelong learner, and she is currently working on her PhD, that doesn't surprise me, Jennifer, that doesn't, and in education leadership and policy analysis at the UW-Madison. Mrs. Fanning is away from, when Mrs. Fanning is away from school in the classroom, she enjoys spending time with her family, traveling, and shopping. Mrs. Jennifer Fanning.
Thank you, and thank you for the nice warm welcome. I'd like to introduce some of our outstanding fifth graders that I have here with me this evening. Our first student is Kasiah Babler. She has been a Kennedy Rocket since kindergarten. Our second student is Madison Clemensick. She's also been a Kennedy Rocket since kindergarten. And our third student, Zoe Ziegler, has also been at Kennedy, has been a Kennedy Rocket since kindergarten, and has just recently been named as our phone book cover artist winner, and just discussed that tonight at our PTO meeting here, too. So I'd like to welcome them from Kennedy, both representing Mr. Buckman's class and Mrs. Gustafson's class as our student council representatives, and I'll hand the microphone off.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in his principle, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, ladies. Order entertain a motion to adopt the December tenth agenda. Motion by Audrey, second by Damar Housen. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Citizen comments? We have two this evening. If you'd like to speak to the board, you register with Patrick. First up is Ann Menard. I believe that's right. Ann, we allocate three minutes. If you start going long, I make faces and wave and do things like that, so, all right? Thanks for being here.
Hi, my name is Ann Menard. I live at fifty-three fifty-three North River Road. This is my son Luke. He was the third child we're putting through Craig High School, and we're just kind of coming with a question. We kind of, we lack a boys volleyball program in the Janesville School District. It's kind of coming all around us. We're Beloit, Fort Atkinson, new ones popping up all the time in Madison. And we've approached a couple of different schools about co-ops, or possibly even starting a program here, and I guess I don't know what the best way to begin is. Luke does play volleyball. He did in middle school. Our parochial schools are great. We have coed leagues. And then, we don't have anywhere for those boys to go. The YMCA is seeing an increase in the number of boys playing in their coed middle school leagues as well, but then the boys kind of are stuck afterwards. So I guess I didn't know what our possibilities were, and I wondered what your thoughts were.
We don't typically get into dialogue, but we do have staff. Scott, you're...
Oh, I apologize.
No, that's all right. No, 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 it's fine. So, Scott, we'll give you the contact information if you could reach out and share how we do it in this district, and...
That would be great.
Absolutely. And I believe there's a rule about equity, so if you had one, you had...
There are, I don't think, right?
Right, right.
And we have approached Beloit and Fort Atkinson. Fort Atkinson got a little burned with a co-op they did with Cambridge. Beloit Memorial, however, is very open to a Janesville co-op if the opportunity should arise.
Okay, so Assistant Superintendent will be in contact.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks for coming. Next, Dave Growth.
Good evening. I just wanted to address the board a little bit about the recertification election that goes on each year in the district of Janesville and throughout the state, and all the unions that are there. And the results had just come in for the recertification election for this year. There's eight hundred and thirty certified staff members that are part of the bargaining unit, and of the members that voted, ninety-nine percent of them voted yes for the union to represent them, and so the union just looks forward to working with the school board and the administration and the community for this next year. So, thank you very much for letting me address, and again, we look forward to it, and happy holidays to everyone.
Next, we have student presenter from Parker High School, Jesus Leon Hernandez. Love that name. What do we got going on at Parker?
Thank you for the introduction. I like that. I want to apologize ahead of time. The weather outside definitely has me catching a cold, so if my voice cracks, I'm sincerely sorry. But, all right, let's get started into it. Parker's big gift is well underway. There are over two hundred students who would not have received a single gift for the holidays this year, but thanks to the Parker staff and Janesville community, we have really stepped up to adopt all the students and are able to provide this holiday season gifts for these kids. If you are interested in helping, please email Ms. Derry Eastman, Parker Social Studies teacher. But we are doing so well that even if you do try to adopt a student, you might be placed in a waiting list, and this is such a great problem to have, like, not complaining, but it's a great problem to have. Parker High School staff has raised over four thousand dollars for this year's District Bags of Hope Food Drive on Saturday, December fourteenth. During the event, at the Dollar General warehouse, you will see dozens of Parker students and staff volunteering their time to pack and delivering groceries to families in our community. The first semester isn't even done yet, and Parker students are starting to proceed, process to pick the classes for next year. The book, of course, is available in both English and Spanish on the Parker website. It has lots of great information to help students plan for courses to take in high school that will help with their future work and career plans. Families should email or call their student council if they have any questions. Parker is ready to welcome the Class of Twenty Twenty Four Vikings. Last month, one of our student leadership classes hosted these students for eighth-grade tours. Students learned all about the available elective classes. They are picking their classes this week. And congratulations to the Parker and Craig Castle the Music Man, who gave eight separate performances over this two-weekend run. We can't wait to see what Jerry Awards are won this year, so it will be fabulous, and anyone who, it was fabulous, sorry, and anyone who attended can clarify that for you. Auditions for the musical Chaplain started this past Monday. An interesting bit of trivia was that Parker High School was the first high school in the United States to ever produce this play. The winter sports season is underway, which means get ready to see our basketball, wrestling, swim, gymnastics, and many other great sports dominate all winter long. For information about competitions, please check out the calendar on the Parker website. And finally, tis the season for holiday concerts. Don't miss out on the great opportunity to hear the talents of our very own Parker musicians. Band concert on Sunday, December fifteenth at two PM. Seventh Heaven will perform at Rotary Gardens on Sunday, December fifteenth at five PM. Choir concert on Monday, December sixteenth at seven PM. Orchestra concert on Wednesday, December eighteenth at seven PM. Seventh Heaven will perform at White Music Center on Thursday, December nineteenth at seven PM. And have a great holidays, guys. Thank you.
Our Craig representative is absent this evening. She had a scheduling conflict, but we appreciate the students coming and spending time with us. Next up, I would consider a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Greg, second by Michelle. Any questions? Those in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries nine zero. So, we have Kim Perrinboon with our quarterly safety presentation.
All right. Well, the big chill is finally here, but that does not mean that we will necessarily be canceling school every time the temperatures drop. Over the past several years, the school district of Janesville has canceled school more often due to inclement weather temperatures rather than snowy or icy roads. But how do we keep our students safe when the temperatures do dip? A combined wind chill and temperature below zero means that students will be staying in for recess and/or they will be allowed into our buildings earlier than standard entry time. We ask our building administrators and secretaries to check two different online resources throughout the day to confirm what that combined weather, temperature, and wind chill are. So what does below zero look like? A ten-degree temperature with a fifteen mile an hour wind makes it feel like negative seven. A ten-degree temperature with a ten mile per hour wind makes it feel like negative four. And a five-degree temperature with a twenty-five mile an hour wind makes it feel like negative seventeen. The National Weather Service issues a wind chill chart that we use to determine when we should or shouldn't cancel school, and believe it or not, a human being can be in up to negative seventeen-degree weather for up to thirty minutes before frostbite might set in. And as I was reminding our building administrators this morning about wind chill and cold weather, I said, of course, we won't start a frostbite competition, so don't keep kids out to see if that really is the fact or not. So while it may not feel good to be outdoors in all of this cold weather, we are taking measures to ensure our students are safe and they're not exposed to the elements. There are some other recommendations from the Mayo Clinic in regards to staying warm and preventing frostbite throughout the winter months. These recommendations are dressing in several layers that are loose, because this will act as insulation against the cold, wearing hats or headbands that fully cover your ears, wearing mittens rather than gloves to maintain your finger and hand heat, eating well-balanced meals and staying hydrated, and keeping moving. Exercise keeps the blood flowing and keeps the body warm, but you should not exercise to the point of exertion.
Questions for Kim? Yes, Kathy?
So what is the, can we just remind people of any policies that we might have if the temperatures ever dip or wind chills ever dip to a certain point? Because as a teacher myself, the amount of speculation among students is tremendous. And so what is exact, could we remind people what exactly is the policy?
So we use, for temperature, twenty-five to thirty below zero is the threshold that we're looking for, and we're particularly dialed in on those days where that's going to be the high temperature for the day, right?
You talking about wind chill or you talking about temperature?
Wind chill, right? If I said temperature, I apologize, but wind chill, yeah. So when the, when the wind chill is predicted to be at its warmest, at that level, that is, that's when we start talking about, you know, should we have our doors open today or not?
Other questions for Kim? You should know, Kim was recognized today by the Lions Club at the board meeting. You remember, a few months ago, the Lions donated four thousand dollars towards the vision camera, and Kim facilitated training for twelve Lions members and other volunteers, and it's going off extremely well with her leadership and her staff's leadership and the five nurses we have on staff serving all ten thousand students. That's two thousand students, two per nurse. So far, I think the Lions have screened three hundred, and they really appreciated it. We got to thank you today, but they really appreciated her leadership, and that may not be the safety message, but it certainly addresses a lot of our kids' needs. So, thanks, Kim, for your leadership.
Thank you.
Next, we're pleased to welcome Max Gaggen from the city. I have that right, right, Max? I've heard your name a hundred times. I don't know why I got stuck on that. We've asked Max to come and share some information from the city's perspective on the impact of TIFs. Occasionally, we have questions about how the taxes work and how TIFs work, and we thought we'd bring you in.
Perfect.
So, welcome.
Thank you, President Huth and the Board of Education. My name is Max Gaggen. I'm the Finance Director for the City of Janesville. So my presentation today is going to be twofold. First, I'll be talking about tax increment financing and how that works in the city, and then next, I'll be talking about our citywide revaluation of properties, which occurred this year, which determines property values for assessment purposes. So first, a tax increment financing is an option that allows municipalities to fund infrastructure and other improvements through property tax revenue of newly developed properties. And tax increment financing applies to a tax increment district, and a tax increment district is a geographic location where funding is spent to fund public improvements or to provide incentives to developers. And those tax increment districts must be approved by both the city council as well as the Joint Review Board. The Joint Review Board is made up of one member from each taxing jurisdiction as well as a member at large. And the best way I like to think about it is your Joint Review Board is essentially the board of directors of a company, and they adopt a project plan for each TIF district, and they develop an investment strategy. So these are the projects they want to see happen in a certain area to see growth in your tax dollars. The next slide here shows how a TIF district works. So you'll see on the far left that each district has a base value, and that's the value of the property before the district boundaries are established. And you'll see in the four colors below, those are the values and the tax dollars associated with each, with each jurisdiction within that district, so say, a county, a school, a technical college, and a municipality, and they collect a base amount of taxes. Once the district's created and new value is generated, either through public investment or private investment, that new value is that green triangle here, and that's the additional tax revenue that gets deposited into that district and reinvested. Once that district has reached its useful life, which is this red line here, the Joint Review Board makes a decision to close it, and once that's closed, the value and the tax dollars are remitted back to the appropriate taxing jurisdictions. So the taxing jurisdictions are essentially agreeing to invest money in our community in a certain area. We see that area grow in its value, and when we reach adequate return on investment, we close the district, and all taxing jurisdictions benefit. This slide again shows how a tax increment district works. The things I would like to highlight at the bottom, it does show, there, that one, it does show a millage rate, and how it works is that the base value is set for the district, and your mill rate is applied, and those taxes go back to each of the taxing jurisdictions. The mill rate is also applied for all value above the base value, and that is what is remitted into the district while it's open. So here's a picture. It's hard to see, but it shows the City of Janesville's tax increment districts. We have fourteen active districts currently. Thirteen of those belong within the Janesville School District boundaries. You see on the north side, some of our districts are along the Highway twenty-six and Highway fourteen corridor. See some here, as well as here, as well as in the downtown area, as well as on the east side, in our east side industrial park, as well as on the south side, in our south side industrial park, spanning down to the airport. This slide provides a snapshot of each of the city's tax increment districts and their base values as well as their values today. So you'll see some of the districts started with very relatively low values. Many of those would be a greenfield site, so like a farm field that was then developed with a commercial or industrial business. Some of the other districts are quite larger in their base value, for example, specifically Ten Thirty-Six, which would encompass the entirety of the downtown. The twenty-nineteen EV is your equalized value, so that's the value of the district as of this year. And then the increment EV is your incremental value, so the growth in that value since the creation of the district. And then the last column is what we call tax increment, and that's, those are the tax dollars that go into each area, and those are primarily to fund debt service for public improvements or to provide a developer incentive. So overall, the City of Janesville collects about five point three million dollars in tax dollars in order to reinvest it into these areas. A question we often get is how does the tax increment come from the various taxing jurisdictions, and what effect does that have on the tax rates that are levied by each jurisdiction? So, as you can see here, in this column, it's called apportioned levy. That is the amount that is submitted by each taxing jurisdiction applicable to the City of Janesville. So, for example, the school district of Janesville, about thirty-seven million dollars of your tax levy is applicable to, within municipal limits, to the city. And then there is an additional two million dollars of tax increment generated, so that's based off of your tax rate, and that creates a total levy amount. And if you break it down, about five percent of the tax rate for each of the jurisdictions outside of the Milton School District, I'll go to tax increment or to help fund these jurisdictions and support the city's economic development efforts. Is any questions regarding TIF districts?
First of all, thank you very much for being here.
Of course.
Appreciate your time. So is, this portion that the school district chips in, is that on the debt service side of our equation? Is that where that, we would find that, or?
So, when we say, I'll go back to the slide. It does, these tax dollars do not show up within each taxing jurisdiction's budget. So you guys adopt your levy, that levy is apportioned out, and the tax increment is what's collected above and beyond your budgeted levy or your annual levy to help support the districts. What you would see is that when a district closes, that equalized value is then returned to your tax base, which should lower your tax rate if your tax levy stays the same. Are there any other questions?
Is there a target return? You had the return so far on some of them. Is there a target return you have on, before you close a district, like what you're looking for, or how long that would generally go?
So, that's a great question. So a TIF district is established to meet certain criteria based off its project plan. Some districts are primarily for, say, an industrial development, and they have up to twenty years to recover their costs. If they're in a brownfield or redevelopment area, so specifically, like we see that encompasses our downtown, they have up to twenty-seven years to recover their costs. However, when we analyze a TIF district and when we say we're trying to get its return on investment, what we do is we do projections and try and figure out when that district will recover all of its costs and try and close that district as soon as possible. I think we at the, at the City of Janesville understand that, you know, the other taxing jurisdictions are giving us the opportunity to invest in our community, that we need to be responsible stewards of those taxpayer dollars and close those districts at appropriate times. So what we often see is that many of our districts do close before their, end of their legal useful life.
I actually get asked a lot about TIF districts, and, you know, obviously, the concern is on, on bodies like, like this district and, and that kind of thing, and I'm just wondering, is there, you said there's like fourteen...
Correct.
...districts within the district of Janesville, the school district of Janesville, or within Janesville, Janesville's purview?
There are fourteen TIF districts in the City of Janesville, thirteen of which fall within the school board's...
Okay. Is there, how does the city go about determining whether there's ever a, a point of it not being sustainable? You know, how do you, how do you know when you've got too many districts?
So by state law, municipality can only have fifteen percent of its equalized value within a district, so certainly there is a limiting factor there. Otherwise, you know, it's certainly up to the decisions of the city council as well as that Joint Review Board to determine whether or not it's appropriate to create a tax increment district and whether or not the other taxing jurisdictions want to invest in a certain area of the community. Thank you.
And you may have shared this, but the, typically, they're, they're projected out for twenty years with the hope that they retire early if possible.
Correct. So under state statute, the shortest a district can be open is twenty years, or the maximum length of the shortest type of district is twenty years, the maximum length of the longest term district is twenty-seven years. However, there are districts, especially if they're single-purpose districts, in very small geographic areas, some of those retire in less than ten years, so long as the, the new development there is generating sufficient tax income to help pay off either an incentive or a debt service payment.
And currently, we, you don't have any that are projected? The old term is upside down. So they're all going to realize the investment potential over the period of the TIF?
Correct. So all of the City of Janesville's TIFs currently are projected to break even by their required termination date.
Yes. Michelle Damar Housen?
Thank you. One, not question, two, I guess, two things. Number one, clarification. Once the base is set, that tax amount comes back to the district every year. That's taxable. As the value rises, that stays to pay off anything that's necessary until they close a district, then that is given in addition to the base and moves forward that way.
That is correct. So I'll go back to my previous slide. So the base value that is set here is the amount that each taxing jurisdiction collects for their general fund, for debt service fund throughout the life of the district here, and that amount stays the same from one year to one year twenty. This green triangle is the amount that goes into the tax increment district fund to help pay for an incentive or to pay off debt. Once that district is closed, which is this red line, all of the taxing jurisdictions who made their investments do realize increased property values, which ultimately help decrease your tax rate.
And also share any excess in that new?
Correct. So if a district does end with a balance at the end of its life, all of the taxing jurisdictions do share that amount.
Which is usually small because of that.
Correct.
And one thing, I believe if I'm correct, and you probably can tell me, I spent a few years with the TIF representative from it, but I believe we've only had one unsuccessful TIF district in the City of Janesville's history, and that was the first one, which was then taken and closed and molded into others than that. So in the long run, it ended up profitable, but in the short run, we learned from and went on from there. Is that correct?
I, it wasn't in my position at the time, however, I do recall that we've previously had a district that was distressed.
Number one. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next part.
So the second part of my presentation, I just wanted to brief the Board of Education on the citywide revaluation of properties that occurred this year. So a revaluation is when all properties in the City of Janesville were looked at from a tax assessment purpose to determine what is their fair market value and figure out what the new value is, so we can have an equitable distribution of taxes. So in twenty eighteen, our assessed value was at eighty-two percent of the market value of, say, equalized value, and that's primarily due to changes in the market moving faster than the assessment process. And the assessment process... market moving faster than the assessment process. And the assessment process, especially, from a revaluation purpose, happens about every five to 10 years. And what we've seen is that, at least in the city of Janesville, that residential property growth has been very strong, and the assessments of those properties haven't kept up over the past few years. So we did conduct a revaluation of properties, which essentially looks at the assessed value, as well as market conditions, and makes adjustments to those properties for determining taxes. This chart at the bottom does show the results of our revaluation. So you can see in 2018, these are the assessed values by different classes of properties, broken out as residential, commercial, manufacturing, personal property, and other. And the city of Janesville's assessed value was about $4 billion. In 2019, that total assessed value was about $5 billion, so about a billion dollars worth of assessed value added. And that again is broken out by residential, commercial, manufacturing, and personal property. This column here shows the change from one year to the next, and then the percent change. So you see residential properties increased in value at 31%, about 10% for commercial properties, 19.5% for manufacturing, and 20% personal property, and a slight decrease for other, but with an overall increase of about 24%. This next slide shows the city of Janesville's classes of property, and their distribution of the tax burden. So here, you'll see that in 2018, residential properties comprised of about 65% of values in the community. In 2019, that share increased to about 68%. Commercial properties were about 28.5%, and that decreased to 25.2%, and so on. So what we've seen is that the change, as well as a percent change, that there is a shift in the tax burden from a commercial property to a residential property. And that's primarily due to, I'll go back aside, that the growth in value of a residential property at 31% overall was much faster than the overall total, and much greater than a commercial. So as I was saying, in this chart, residential properties are essentially worth, are increased in value 5.5% more of, of the whole tax burden, and commercial properties made up about 11.6% less, so on and so forth. And then graphically, what that looks like, this is in 2018, our assessed value. See that residential properties make up about 65%, and this slice of the pie, commercial at 28. And then moving on to the next chart, you'll see that the piece of the pie that belongs to residential properties increased about 3.5%, so it's a little bit larger, and commercials shrunk a little bit. And when we do see this, you do see a shifting of your tax burden, as I mentioned, from a commercial property to a residential property. That's all I had this evening, but I'm happy to answer any other questions the Board of Education may have on revaluation.
Commissioner Thompson.
Now, we'll be getting our tax bill shortly.
I have mine yesterday.
And, how do I put this? Even though the school district, and like the city, may have lowered their tax formula, if your property went up substantially in the reassessment, you're going to pay more money. Your taxes are going to go up. Would that be a fair statement?
What I would, the best way I would reflect it as, going to this chart here. So the total value of the community went up about 24%. If the assessed value of your individual property went up more than 24%, your likelihood of paying more taxes is, is good. If your property went up less than 24%, your likelihood of paying less taxes this, next year is, is pretty likely. So in an instance here, many to most residential properties in the community grew at a faster rate than the city as a whole. Most commercial properties grew at a lo- lower rate than as a whole. So what we're seeing is that many residential properties in the community are paying more in taxes, many commercial properties in the community are paying less than they did in the previous year.
Yeah, just to make, make a note. I know mine's, my property grew at almost 60% for some reason. They couldn't explain it to me, but they just said it's worth that now. So anyway, going on, commercial property has gone down for a variety of reasons. One of them is closed stores, less value, can't rent them. And then the controversial part of dark stores, and that on the taxing. So really, it's fallen back, fallen back on the residential to pick up the, the extra thing. So I just want people not to know, the school district and the city of Janesville is not pushing their taxes up or anything. They just have to make up a certain amount of revenue. And so we have no choice when one group of, of the taxable amount goes down in value, for whatever reasons. So I don't want people beating on the Rock County, city of Janesville, Black Hawk, Janesville School District. We're not the reason. We're holding our taxes, and we have for years. So, thank you.
What's an example of other in that last set of slides?
Other is primarily agricultural property or forested property. It makes up only a few million dollars in the city limits.
Well, Max, thank you. I'm sure you get as many questions as we do, and some are unique to the circumstance. I heard from a Realtor today that her taxes went up, and she was upset, and it was my fault. So I, I took responsibility for that. But the reality is, other people in the room talked about the tax rates in Janesville, Wisconsin versus other comparable communities in the state of Wisconsin, and they compared to Illinois. And I think the tax rate's favorable in this community. And appreciate you coming and spending time with us. This is an oft confusing topic, and anytime we can shed a little light on it, it's greatly appreciated.
All right.
So thank you.
A report from the Finance, Building, and Grounds Committee. Commissioner Audrey.
This is fun meeting night. Finance, finance, finance. Couple items from our committee to, just to mention. Our leased properties, we have two of them. One, actually both on North Barker Drive, one that houses Tagos and Tate. The lease there is, ends August of 2020, and we will be evaluating if we continue leasing at that particular location. And then we have another one that houses all of our large vehicle and storage, and I think it's called Area. I won't go there, but it, it's kind of like a dark area. We'll, we'll call it that. So, so I just wanted to share that, which is down from, I mean, years ago, we used to have many more leased properties, and we only have two. So it's a quicker conversation. I'll get into facility maintenance projects. There's only one big one that remains to be done. It's storefront, what's called storefront on the south side of Craig, basically where you would go in near the auditorium part. That'll be replaced probably springtime at this point. Spring break, maybe? Can't remember exactly when that was out there. Then the next portion, I really won't get into it. As we talk facility maintenance, we, we reviewed them, a little bit of the middle schools, trying to, to say what would be equitable across all three, and then next, it'll be expanded across all elementary schools, and then lastly, was the high schools. But those, I'll say, we touched the surface there. There's much more work to be done. The minutes really capture what we discussed there, so I won't get into any more detail there. One of the more riveting items for our committee was, as we continue to unravel, school financing, equalization aid worksheet, we went through in great detail. When I say great detail, as we think about the worksheets that we have, this is kind of a shortened or a small version of the worksheet, which Mr. McCray did a nice job of blowing it up, and he titled this, "The Simple Equalization Aid Worksheet." Now, it's, you can actually read it, but it's quite detailed. So I think there's a few things that just highlight here. What, what really makes up the equalization aid worksheet? First, I'll say, for details, you want to go to our committee and review the video, because Dan says it a lot better than I can. But from a highlight standpoint, what are the components of the equalization aid? Our membership, shared cost, and equalized property value, which we just learned a little bit about. And then we say shared cost. Well, really, what makes up those shared costs? It's anything that, other than state, federal, and local fees. Mainly, it's our expenses, less any receipts, or any debt service expense. So that really, or plus debt service receipts, I'm sorry, that makes up all of those shared costs. So as I said, if you want more information, because all of that is part of the funding formula, but Dan broke it down the best I've seen to date, over the 11 years I've participated in this. So it was really pretty good. And the last item that I'll mention, we will be bringing to the board in January, and it is the, the budget assumptions for 2021. We went over draft, and, in great detail, and talked about some of the pieces. I think we're going to touch it next week during our committee one more time, and then it'll be shared with us as a board. So with that, before my voice gives out, are there any questions?
Yeah, I want, I just want to touch on something here that most people don't know of, and you do, Greg, and you've been on the committee longer than I was. But anyway, we pay for students to go to private schools if they don't want to go to pu- public schools, to our schools. So we have to pay money to, to those schools. But there's something most people don't know, and that, and that's the Milwaukee Charter Program. After all of our equalized money comes in, after that's there, before we even give to anyone else, they take over a million dollars every year off the Janesville School District. We gotta, that's money we don't get, and goes to take care of Milwaukee Charter Schools. I'm not sure of the ones. It used to be just a mix of them. So we kind of get left behind for a million dollars, which we could use very nicely at. But it is what it is. We're one of the highest taxed for that. I remember that throughout the state, on contributing to the Milwaukee Charter Schools. I'm not sure of the reasoning, anything else, but we, I went through some discussions when I was a Wisconsin, you know, school boards member, on the state level, and they could never give a reason why. It's just the formulas that were designed worked against Janesville, and that many districts don't have anything going. So we'll leave it at that. I just wanted to be aware that we are down a million when they hand us money every year. So, or, maybe not hand us money, but make it available for us to use. So I just thought I wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Other questions for Greg?
I will comment just on that particular point, only to say that it is the legislature that passed that. So that is fundamentally the reason why. Now, the formula that goes into it, it's a formula that all the districts, other than Milwaukee, has to go through, but it's, it was through legislative act.
Do you know how long we've been at, at Tagos, at that facility?
I do not.
Anybody?
Twelve.
Got to guess. 10, 12 years?
It's been 12, 13 years.
12th year the school's existed, so I don't, I don't have the history if it's always been at that physical location or not, but this is their 12th year.
Okay.
As a school.
I, I recognize that there's a cost involved with Tagos, and I recognize there's a cost in leasing facilities. I just asked that we, I received a call from a student who really likes the facility.
Wonderful.
Does, does very well at the facility, did not do well at one of our other facilities. So as we move forward, looking at whether or not to continue a lease at that facility, I'd ask that maybe we do a cost benefit analysis. Maybe PPC wants to look at what the curriculum is, and if it can be served in other facilities we own. I, I just think that, what that student shared with me is, if they were moved back to one of the high schools, they would not be successful, and they are currently being successful. So there, there is a cost, and there is a benefit to all of our educational programs. And at times, when I served on finance, we looked at the numbers, and sometimes we didn't see the other parts of the numbers. So appreciate your work. Other questions for Greg, or the committee? Who's on your committee?
Commissioner Myers, Commissioner Millard.
All right.
So thank you.
Next item is, consider approval of the Donovan Group to assist the district with referendum planning. Mr. Dan McCray.
So in your board packet, you have a memo that I shared with Superintendent Pufall in regards to the engagement of the Donovan Group, to essentially assist the district in the communication strategies, the community engagement aspects, and the informational aspects of a potential referendum. All right. So when we say potential referendum, I think it's important to note that there are a series of kind of no-go, go-no-go steps, right? So we're, excuse me, we're not going in November until the board makes that determination, if you will, in August, should they even get to that point. In preceding August, there are a number of factors, community engagement sessions, and really even beginning with the board, first and foremost, in terms of discussing even the feasibility of going, of potentially going to a referendum. And again, just to recap, it's a capital referendum, and as you read in the first paragraph of the memo, this really stems from the work that the district, the board, did a number of years ago, relative to an assessment of facility needs, primarily focusing on infrastructure, mechanical, electrical, plumbing systems, fire safety systems, or life safety systems, I should say. And a number of work, dollars of work, were performed back in 2017 via an Act 32 energy measure, as part of Governor Walker's, you know, budget process back in 2017. The Act 32 Energy Efficiency Measure mechanism was vetoed, or actually, a thousand-year moratorium on that. So that took away that tool. So we essentially completed about $15 million worth of work, of a potential $130 million worth of work, leaving 115 on the table. So even a business manager can do that simple math, right? So, so what mechanisms do we have to accomplish that work? One could say, well, absorb that in your operational budget. Our capital maintenance, not capital improvement, right, but capital maintenance, maintaining our existing facilities, that budget, if you will, outside of our traditional commitment to maintenance work and custodial work, is about 1.4 million. All right. So 1.4 million into 100 and some million, in 100 years, we'll be done. Right? So I don't think that's a timeline we can necessarily afford. So then, the next available financing mechanism is to potentially pursue a referendum. Now, is it going to be a referendum of 115 million, 50 million? Again, we don't know, right? So as Superintendent Pufall has said, you know, we're stewards of our facilities. It's up to us to, to perhaps identify a need, and to propose that need to the board, to which then hopefully receive direction, in terms of informing and engaging not only the board, but the community as a whole. Thus, coming full circle, that brings us back to the action item we're asking today, and that's the approval of the Donovan Group. Also outlined in your board memo is, we visited with Dash J Consulting, as well as representatives, although we are not engaging an architect at this time. It just happens to really be a relationship that Superintendent Pufall and I have with Kit Daly, who's a community engagement specialist. Right? Because there's a little bit of an art to this. All right? And sometimes what happens is districts will engage an architectural firm, or a CM, and they will bring resources as part of that. Having an independent, if you will, such as the Donovan Group, really has no vested interest, other than perhaps the successful passage of a referendum. But again, there are several go-no-go steps to that process, prior to even the board's consideration in August. uh, prior to even the board's consideration in August. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. Sorry, it's a one-page memo, but like a five-minute diatribe. Sorry about that.
I'd consider a motion to approve hiring the Donovan Group to assist the district with referendum planning.
So moved second.
A motion by Commissioner Ardry, second by Commissioner Millard. Are there questions? Michelle?
Sorry, something you said at the end there is a part of the question. So you said, um, they have no vested interest besides a potential passing. There's no financial benefit to them outside of what we pay as a consulting if it should or should not pass, right? It's just the fee that's.
You're spot on.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Absolutely. So the size, if you will, the project. Okay. Now, you know, we don't want to be disingenuous to those firms that provide those services, right? But I think in order to buy a little more transparency, having that independent, uh, engagement specialist. So if we pass a $50 million referendum, the community does, I should say, or a $500 million referendum. And again, those are just sample numbers, all right? Um, there's no dividend, all right, for the community engagement specialists. So in this case, the Donovan Group, it's $30,000.
Thank you. Just making sure.
No, great clarification. Thank you. Other questions? Commissioner Murray?
Thank you. Uh, first of all, I want to thank Greg Ardry and the Finance Committee for the great work you guys do. And while I don't see the entire picture of our maintenance needs, um, I am aware of a lot of it because we've been working with UNESCO. So I, I appreciate that. Um, I just have, um, just a couple of issues with this proposal at this time. One is, uh, my own fault as a board member. Um, I think we're really, um, in some gray area and possibly in my opinion only. Um, I'm not sure we're following our bid and quotation policy. We've, we've changed this policy several years ago because the threshold was so low. The way I interpret this policy is that, um, any, uh, requests for services over $10,000 need to go through our competitive bid process. And from all that I've learned the last day or so, we didn't use that process. Uh, vendors were solicited based on some valid reasons for that this is a niche or a niche. I don't know which service. Um, we wanted to, even though UNESCO would offer this service, we wanted to make sure we had an independent provider. Um, and those are all valid. But I think those are our conditions, in my opinion. Those are conditions that should have been part of the request for bids. Those are conditions when we go out for competitive bid to the public, that those are conditions that we're looking for. So please apply if you can meet these conditions. So I'm concerned about that. I, um, a big promoter of spending locally if possible. Now, I, I don't know either way if we have somebody locally that could provide this service or not. We don't know because we didn't go, go to bid for it. Um, yeah, I understand, you know, um, I must say, we, as, we have had relationships with this particular group in the past, so we know their work. But again, so I'm, I'm concerned about that, that we didn't use competitive bidding in this process for a 30,000-plus contract for services. Because I believe the intent of the board when creating this policy is just that. Um, so that's, that one. And then furthermore, um, I think I can't support this particular motion because I think it's too early.
Okay.
I, um, one reason is, boy, I'm really anxious to see my tax bill. And I'm really curious what the rest of the community is going to say to me once they get their tax bill.
Sure.
Especially as it relates to the school district. And to me, that will be a big tell on whether or not I want to have a discussion on any referendum at this time or not. That's just one. Um, I was, uh, happened to be fortunate to be at some local high school athletic events. And I had a couple of people approach me that are supporters of education. One individual has the means to pay. And he caught me off guard. And he said, Kevin, I'm upset with you in the board. I don't think you have, and he means the board, have done enough to convince me that you've looked internally deep enough to help fund some of these projects. And he really floored me because I don't think he's going to support the, um, support a referendum. He's not convinced that we've taken a hard enough look at our own budget, that we continue to tax to the max, and other things that we've seen in the paper about the district. But I must say, I, I'm, we have a wonderful district and I'm really happy with the direction we're going. But I'm concerned about a referendum at this time. I, um, to spend 30,000-plus dollars right now without really knowing, I don't even know what we're talking about as a referendum. The ballpark that we hear is anyone from 50 to 110 million dollars. I don't like spending taxpayer dollars on a litmus test, asking the taxpayers, how much pain would you like to enjoy? How much pain can we get out of you? You know, what's your threshold? You know, and to me, that's what we're asking. I, so that's just my opinion. I, I think we're, this is just my opinion, that we're way too early. I, I, I'm not convinced that we can, we're prepared, or I'm not prepared to support a referendum in the year 2020. I just don't, I think it's, so therefore I won't support this motion. Thanks.
Other questions? Carl?
Yeah, I'd just like to make it, uh, I have my, you know, misgivings. And I'm a very big supporter of let's bring our infrastructure up. But it bothers me we didn't go out for bids on this, uh, because that is a thing we haven't been doing. But the other thing is I do want to see someone do this to see what we really are trying to target for funding, everything's needed in the ways and the time things. And what are the alternate ways to it? We're not going to get it internally, as maybe some people think. But there are more creative ways of doing things. And I have several in my mind because I know others have done it. But when we get to that, so I have mixed emotions. Do I want to support just, this is just a plan or someone to help set up a schedule? Is that correct? Or you already have the schedule?
Well,
and the target?
And any schedule I would say we have is a draft schedule. Okay, having kind of sailed these waters before, even I, you know, a kid from the South Side of Chicago can put together a schedule, all right? But I think the art, if you will, of engaging the board first, you know, in administration, and then kind of beginning to peel the layers of that onion, uh, really extends beyond just anyone throwing out a schedule. All right. So through the process, and you're almost experiencing a little bit of it tonight. But, you know, I'm not a trained facilitator, all right? A portion of which this fee is really not just a schedule, but really working with the board and the community as a whole to essentially test, if you will, uh, the consumption of, if even a referendum, the dollar value of that referendum. All right. So, uh, it's an investment, all right? And sometimes I would say, okay, it's a $30,000 investment. Everything is a go throughout, right? And those are assumptions on my part. And even if you were to, or we as a district, were able to achieve a 30 million or a 60 million or a X million dollar, we have to, and we heard the term earlier, what's the return on investment? All right. The $30,000 worth of work, in addition to the time that the administration puts into is worth a $50 million investment, again, just to pick a number, into the community's building. Again, the community's building, that's maybe not a bad return.
Yeah, I, I do think we have to weed a little deeper. Um, and I know we're kind of trying to, all of our jurisdictions are looking at capital improvements or maintenance or some kind of fun thing, and all necessary. And it's to our advantage to be there first. Can't get out of that. Uh, but we need to sit down and look at what are, what are our alternate opportunities? What is the amount we need, uh, to get by anyway for now? How do we move forward and that? And I, maybe the Finance Committee's had this discussion. But I don't know, I'd like to have them share it with us before we move forward a little further. So, uh, and I know I could go to the meetings and I didn't, and that. So I'll be the guilty person. Yeah, I, I don't want to pick on anyone. I just want to do it right. And you do have to respect, uh, the elderly. I'm an elderly. And I'm going to get a double tax increase because of the way they did my property this year. That's what it is. I'll come up with the money. So, uh, so I'm not fighting from a personal standpoint. I want the children to be educated with the best and safest. But I do question, are we going about it in a proper way? And I do trust Greg and others for trying to lead us that way. So I'd just like to hear more before we say referendum. And then we say, now we're going to plan for that referendum.
Well, again, the, the planning too is, you know, it, it really begins with the board first, right? So we need to keep that in mind. Because the reality is if it's '09, all right, well, then we're done. All right. To which then, you know, Kevin Murray, Commissioner Murray would say, well, are we getting a refund? You know, on that $30,000, to which I'd say, that's a fair question, right? If we didn't even get beyond February. All right. So, but it is a process and, and we do have to begin. And this is, if you will, best practice in terms of initiating, uh, the process.
I want to thank, thank you for that. And I'm going to support this. But I'm going to interject myself heavily into it and see what the alternatives and the objects are, how to go forward with it. So thank you so much for your, uh, very good answers.
Commissioner Thompson?
I've had the pleasure to be involved in two referendums many years ago. And it does take several months to figure out where you're at and where you're going. Um, and I think, I support the motion. I, I want to find out where's the community at. I don't know. I hear from many, many people, some for, some against, whatever. And I don't have a clue as a board member, if we had a referendum, how much I'd support. And I remember we really struggled with the board years ago what to support or what not to support. So I support the motion.
Go ahead.
I just want to thank you for taking the time to present. And one of the pieces of information that I remember from, I'm getting older, so my memory is getting a little bit faded. But I'm a very visual person, so I appreciate Greg. At one point in a board meeting, you shared the state of some of our facilities and maintenance. It was a dashboard. And I will remember that because it clearly outlined the state of our schools' buildings. And whether they were green, red, yellow, what needed to be fixed immediately. That gave me as a board member and also as a parent, and also as a community member, the state of things that need to be fixed. And I'm not a construction expert, but I know that if you can fix it ahead of time, instead of waiting until it goes to heck and handbasket, it's a little bit more on the, less expensive on the preventative side than the aftermath. So I think it's well worth our time to pursue this and see where the community lies, educate the board, and I'm all about planning. So I don't mind that we start this early because it just starts the discussion and you get to that yea or nay, if it's a go or no go. Thank you.
Kathy?
Um, so, uh, I'm on the Finance Committee and, um, and you know, and I've been part of our conversation about what kinds of things we need to, uh, maintain. And remember, we're not talking about, we haven't really been talking about improvements. We've been talking about just trying to maintain, um, old buildings. And, um, and as a teacher, I can tell you that, um, the, there's a, there's a direct correlation with the quality of the facility and, um, and student achievement and the student experience. If the, if the, um, if the air conditioning doesn't work well, or maybe there isn't air conditioning, uh, or the heat doesn't work well, or if it's, if it's loud, if it is, uh, if there's, um, if there's frost building up on the insides of your windows. Uh, and not only is that, of course, taxing on the entire system, but, um, it creates, it literally creates an atmosphere where it's more difficult for students to learn. Um, uh, so I have, I have always been, um, thinking about this from that standpoint. And, um, and, you know, realizing, of course, since we, we've had the UNESCO, um, examination, the report for, um, several years. And we were able to do a lot of it, um, ourselves and, um, through, uh, the Act 32, um, funds that were provided. And so we have done a lot of stuff that we, you know, that up to the point that we could, um, with our, with what we have. Um, and so I am, I'm not quite sure what the, I feel like I'm having a chicken and egg conversation here. So do we spend our time with, um, these consultants talking about what our priorities are, or do we rely on ourselves? Um, because we have been talking a lot about what our priorities are. Uh, and so, um, and I agree with, um, Commissioner Murray that, um, I felt, I think at that, that price tag, it needs to be put out to bid. I don't, you know, and if there's only two people in the area that do it, well, then there's two people that bid on it, um, and, and put out to a legit bid. Um, I also, so I am concerned about that. Um, I do think that, I'm also concerned that, um, when we first started talking about referendum, uh, I asked if we were going to hire consultants. And we said at the time, I thought, maybe I misunderstood, that we were going to kind of keep it in-house and, and, you know, workshop it ourselves and then bring it out to the community and, and widen our, our, um, our area here to get their feedback. And so, uh, and, and talk to all the stakeholders as well. And so I, I don't know exactly where the need for a consultant, um, you know, is this some, did I miss, did I miss a meeting? Or did I miss a memo? Or did I misunderstand, um, that? Because that, this was not my impression of where we were going to go at one point. So, um, so thank you for listening. I know I went in a lot of different directions there. But I just wanted to express myself, um, on, uh, on this subject as I see at the moment.
Greg?
So I'm going to talk a little bit from the history of what we have done. And, uh, last 10 years through our capital improvement plan, we called it, but we really should have called it maintenance plan. We've probably spent in the neighborhood of $11 million. And over the 10-year period of being in lots of different nooks and crannies of the, of the buildings, you see the state of them. And the, the question in my mind becomes, what happens if? And we have a lot of places that, that what happens if can easily be this winner. Can easily be this winner because we could have four, five, six different boilers. I'll go. That would be, that's my concern. So when we, and I guess I'll take a stand back. Yes, we did talk about internal. And the engineer in me, which is also the stupid part of me, thinks, can do everything because I am a trained facilitator. So do I believe that I could have us coordinate and get through all of the topics? I absolutely can. But that's a heavy lift on this elected official that's not getting paid for this job. It's a heavy lift. If the promises are important, then this would be a part of- then this would be a part of the promises. And based on the academic performance of the district, I would struggle to have Superintendent Puffall and team spend significant effort in helping to lead the charge, to help us dig in and understand just what the nine of us can even agree to, of what needs to be done. And even in my mind, I can say, I don't know what needs to be done. I know the worst of the worst. I know the boilers that need to be replaced. I know those. But when you go in the buildings and just go by a window, and you feel the coal air coming through it, it's just like we're throwing dollars out the window. That's not helping for academics. The utility company appreciates the money, but they would prefer the entities aren't paying in that manner. So, so from an energy efficiency standpoint, we're completely missing it all over the place. And one of the things that we've talked about, and I don't know how many of my fellow board members have actually went to Edison and seen the improvements that we've made there. The learning environment is significantly different, but I'm not going to talk about that one. I'll talk about Washington, just to improve lighting and the impact that has had on learning. Now, is this the right mechanism to get us to where we need to be? I don't know. But I do know this, if we do nothing, we get nothing. We'll be right where we're sitting at. So when the boilers start failing, we will, we have, we will have to react to that. Now, whether it should have went out for bid, I think is a valid question. I absolutely think that's a valid question, but the, what does it mean and facilitation to get us to where we can even consider, do we want to go to a referendum? I think it's a necessary tool. Because I don't think anybody here in the room or associated with the district has the expertise to do that and the time. So I'm only sharing from my perspective, because I know, I, I think about some of the benefits of our facilities that we have, that fortunately, the Jamesville Fire Department were able to do some outstanding training in the tunnels of Craig. And I'm thinking, wow, they're doing that, but as they pass those boiler, fortunately, it has been maintained. And fortunately, they're not in the, I'll say, the bowels of Franklin doing it. Because in the bowels of Franklin, even from a safety standpoint, we have no idea when the boiler is going to fail. And if somebody is in the line of fire, it could be bad. So when I think about all of those things, that's what keeps me here at this table. Just wanted to share that. Thank you.
I'd also add, I appreciate the concern about the bid process and the quotation process. However, knowing the, the spirit of the, of the guidelines and the spirit of the policies and the regulations, what is supposed to occur is, is information is supposed to be shared a minimum of three times, either through an advertisement or publicly. That's one of the criteria, I'm looking at the policy, one of the criterias of the policy. So when we talk about that, and we talk about the UNESCO report, and we talk about the improvements we made at Edison, and with the $15 million through Act 32, and we look at the articles that have been in the Gazette and on the radio continually, I would say that we've met the spirit of the policy. I would say in the future, we will be putting ads in the paper and paying for ads in the paper. However, in this case, I know for a fact that local businesses know that we're considering a referendum. I know that because two have contacted me and said, I'm not interested in facilitating this part of the process, because I am interested in if you pass a referendum, in working on the project. They want it to be separated from the design or the building of the facilities. Having said that, I do appreciate that we need to follow policies, and, and there is bids not required, unfortunately, these policies are about 12 pages long, everything that relates to this. So while I would like that we would have advertised, I believe that we have shared enough information with the community, because people have called me on this, that people know or are interested in this kind of work. I'm not trying to disregard policy, but I do believe we've met the spirit of the guidelines. Any other comments? Yes?
That's always the risk of going first, you know?
Thank you.
Some wonderful things I heard. I just, what Commissioner Ardry said, you know, now I'm concerned, if we have a boiler in a building that we're concerned is going to explode and hurt people today, why aren't we doing something about it today? And why are we risking going to referendum? Why aren't we taking care of these things right now? So to say, geez, you know, that boiler could, we could have exploding boilers over the holiday, well, that gee, we could have a fire in, in a building, you know what I mean? So these things come and go. So that's a concern. If we got exploding boilers, let's take care of it today. I'm willing to address that right away. And
Can I clarify my statement right quick?
Yeah.
So what I was talking about is the farmer where to walk by. So if the boiler fails, typical failure mode isn't explosions. Something else had to happen for that. But if it does fail, and someone's right there, then it could be. I mean, that is many, for many of our equipment, if there's a failure and someone's there, then that is the, the facts of the situation. That's many times over. So I wasn't saying that it was in danger of exploding, but in a failure mode, if someone's right there, then it would be an issue.
And Kathy Myers' comment about air conditioning, oh, I can hear it now, right?
What?
When I was a kid, we never had air conditioning, and geez, we turned out all right.
And you turned out all right, yeah.
Right?
You'd have been better.
That's exactly, that's exactly the kind of comments we're going to hear, is that
You turned out all right, probably for the time that you were
Yeah.
There.
Well, that's a debate, if I turned out all right. But you know what I'm saying? So anyway, I'll just, that's enough.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Murray, because you just rationalized why you should vote for this motion. Because you need to have all of the data in front of you from an independent contractor who can give us the information we need for the community. Commissioner Dahmerhausen?
I'll just make it quick. Air conditioning is more than air conditioning. It's air quality. We saw that at Edison. My, being a toll, a toll worker, I could never make it through more than much a half a day without splitting headaches, and our teachers and children were there. Today, that's gone, and they took care of it. But the other thing, when you talk about boilers, you can talk also about the pipes that lead to those. We don't talk much about it. We, the boiler people can envision, but through these buildings is old, old piping. And we need to also address that. So we have to be aware of that. Explosion, probably not, but a failure in a joint, yes, maybe. I'm not an expert at it, so I'll, I'll step back from it. Thank you.
Or do a roll call, please? Or do you want to do electronic? Whatever you want to do. Do roll call.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. The motion to approve the Donovan Group to assist the district with referendum planning was made by Greg Ardry, seconded by Jim Millard. Roll call vote in alphabetical order with the president last. Ardry?
Yes.
Dahmerhausen?
Yes.
Hayworth?
Yes.
Herta?
Yes.
Millard?
Yes.
Murray?
No.
Myers?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
So that passes eight to one.
Thank you. We have one pending board request from Commissioner Ardry, and we're going to get a little more clarification between the superintendent and Commissioner Ardry. We had a different board request from Commissioner Murray that has been withdrawn because it's been addressed. That concludes our regular business. We're going to move back to closed session. And we will adjourn out of closed. We're going back and close briefly. It's good thinking. I didn't say it'd be long.